Thank you for attending at the City of Prospect Heights Council Chambers on the eighth of May, 2017, at the hour of 6:30, or close to it. So if we can have a roll call for quorum, please.
Sure. Alderman Messer, here. Alderman Ludwicksen.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Here.
And Alderman Williamson is not here.
All right, is he?
Yeah, he's a minute away, he said.
Okay, he's on the way, he should be in. Note when he walks in.
I will.
So that we have him on the roll.
Okay.
All right, great, do we have the quorum, we're ready to move on. Let's go for the pleasurable legions.
He's here.
And Mr. Williamson is here.
Is here, yes.
Madam Clerk, if you could move out with the minutes, please approve the minutes. What do you have and what are we approving?
The April 24th, 2017, regular council meeting minutes.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the April 24th regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? There being none, let's take a roll call.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Messer.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Madam Clerk, you have the honor of swearing in our newest Alderman, who was here just last time, too.
Yes.
Because of the election, he voted for himself and he won. Everything worked out, so if we could have that procedure taken care of, if you would rise and Alderman Dolick join the city clerk, and you will be sworn in rather than sworn out.
Okay, would you raise your hand? Okay, repeat after me. I, Matthew J. Dolick, do solemnly swear.
I, Matthew J. Dolick, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as Alderman for Ward Five.
And that I will dutifully.
Faithfully discharge.
Discharge the duties of Alderman for Ward Five.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Administrator, do you want to take it from there?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is 5B, and we are grateful, we have a presentation from the Lions Club, this is a check presentation to the Prospect Heights Police Department. And this helps the department fund the summer outreach program with many of the Prospect Heights youth. They do a number of really great things that keep these kids active in the summer positively. There's, I think this year, there's Architecture Foundation Tour in the city, there's a trip to YMCA Camp Duncan, which is a great release, and there's other things. And all of these activities, which also provide positive relationships between the youth in the community and the police department, police department volunteers, volunteer officers volunteering their time, the police department volunteers, the citizens that help. It's really a great program and a great youth outreach effort, and they're making a presentation of a contribution to that program for this summer's activities.
Can we get you down front, Patrick's ready to take the inevitable, you're a Lions, a small Lion.
Thank you. On behalf of the Prospect Heights Lions Club, we'd like to make this presentation.
Do you want to take this one?
For the outreach program.
Thank you.
To continue to do their extraordinary work with the young gentlemen and ladies of the community.
Thank you.
If we can do any service, we'd be happy to help.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, hold that pose. Nice smile. Good.
Does that mean you own a newspaper?
And we don't have any appointments, confirmations, and proclamations, which brings us to item 7, 7A. We have a presentation by Ms. Chris Colt regarding Clear Lane Retention Pond.
I'm going to let my husband speak, it's too long.
Okay, very good.
Would you come to the podium, identify yourself, you're on camera, and you look good.
Thank you.
Everything's ready to roll.
Get that one next.
All right, you have your slides to work with?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is William Cook, this is my wife Christine and our son Phil, and we are here this evening to talk tonight about the ongoing stormwater issues in Lake Clare. So this is our home at 501 Shaw Lane, and we moved in in 99, and the last few years we've really invested our life savings in the home, new roof, new windows, new siding, new kitchen, you name it, we have really, as they say, bought all in. We love our home, we love this community, we did the landscaping, we even put in a new driveway. This is our home, and we do love it, we do love living here. But occasionally, this happens, and this is when we don't love it so much. But we do believe that this can be fixed with some help from you. This is the back of our house, we even put out a new deck, and this is the view from our backyard, and it's beautiful, and we absolutely love it. We pay a lot in taxes to have this beautiful view, but occasionally, this happens. And this is happening more frequently over the years. And now what is happening is, as we get weather reports, like Mike Kaplan last weekend or whatever, said, oh, 5.8 inches. My wife literally goes into a cocoon, and until the event is over, she is glued to either the TV or to our computer because she's afraid of the possibility of what might happen. And so that's what prompted her then, after the event was over, to contact the mayor and say, Mayor, we need help, which we've been asking for actually the last 16 years. So what are the causes and possible solutions to the Lake Clare stormwater problem? So let's take a closer look at Lake Clare retention pond. So all retention ponds must have an overflow and an overflow. Well, located over in this corner is the overflow, which actually, if you drove past there, you won't be able to see it because there's actually a big bush in the way. And there needs to be an overflow. Now, the logical place to put it would have been over, so the water would have flowed over on the street and then down the street. But in this case, the stormwater is allowed to flow across our property and threaten our home. The facility was built incorrectly. So, I mean, I don't know, who approved the design of your retention pond, which has the stormwater go through a home instead of down a street? I can't answer that. It should be noted that design rainfall standards have changed since Lake Clare was permitted, and the city now uses a higher rainfall detention design. So it'd be interesting to see what would happen to that area with the new numbers. Okay, so now, the City of Prospect Heights conducted a drainage study back in September of 2012. So it encompassed various areas that do experience flooding, and this, of course, is Lake Clare. And so these were some of the deficiencies, the restrictor and the blockage, and then the no dedicated overflow, overland flow. So there was actually six recommendations or alternatives to solving the stormwater problems in Lake Clare. So this is the affected area that was involved in the study. The first one was to televise and clean the 24-inch sewer. Now, Lake Clare Pond and the Shires Pond retention area are connected. The second alternative was to replace the restrictor. Now, this is what they said in the report, the restrictor at Lake Clare appears to be subject to clogging and/or blockage somewhere in the system. The clogging and blockage is not only causing flooding levels at Lake Clare to be higher than they otherwise would be, but also to drain more slowly. This slow draining negatively influences the groundwater levels around the adjacent properties, and some pumps are likely not able to sufficiently drain the sumps. This restrictor is vitally important because it determines whether the water goes to Camp McDonald Creek or to the Shires Pond. So this is a very, very important restrictor. Now, the third suggestion was televise and clean Shires Pond system. The next one was to replace the overflow structure, which is at the back end of the Shires Pond. And then the alternative five was an H&amp;H modeling to optimize the system. So honestly, I had to look it up. So it's hydrologic and hydraulic study, it's the study of how the water would be moving from one place to another and its impact. Oops. Okay. Then the last one was, from what I understand, from the previous city administrator, they were contemplating possibly running a pipe, another separate pipe, from the pond when it hits the overflow level and running it down to Shires Pond, and would seem very extravagant. Anyway, the Shires Pond is supposed to act as an overflow for the Lake Clare Pond. Let's see how that is working out. So here's Lake Clare Park, which right next to it is this beautiful expansive area. And the back of that is where there's an overflow structure. Sorry, I pressed a button, it's not going, there it goes. Okay, so is the Shires Pond at the Lake Clare Park being used to its capacity during a storm? We don't know, because the recommended H&amp;H study was never completed per the 2012 drainage study. So this is what the 2012 drainage study has to say. According to the city staff, Lake Clare fills up and exceeds its designed high-water level while the Shires of Prospect Heights Detention Facility does not fill up to its designed high-water level during storm events. The Shires Pond has not caused overbank flooding to the adjacent properties, rather, during storm events, the pond does not appear to fill to the level that would be expected. Now, this is, those were direct quotes, this is out of a bigger paragraph. The Shires Detention Pond is a dry bottom facility, is approximately 1.56 acre feet, about half the detention provided by Lake Clare. Hmm, all right, so I got to thinking. Why not increase the storage capacity at the Shires Pond by excavation? Increase the storage. Removing dirt is more cost-effective alternative than installing pipes. You know, just make this area more conducive to store more water. And they're already saying that it's not even filling up the capacity as it is. So we need to find out why it's not, and then increase this capacity. Now, this is the overflow structure that was quoted in the document, and so was the structure ever repaired, replaced as recommended by the drainage study? By the looks of it, I don't think so. So there's another area that does add to the flooding issue in Lake Clare, and that's the St. Alphonsus Retention Area. Now, when it rains, the water flows down to this retention area. When that retention area fills up, it comes out of this drain, it goes along the ditch and goes into this drain, which then feeds directly into the pond. So the stormwater flows from St. Alphonsus Retention Area directly into the Lake Clare Retention Pond, adding to the flooding. And that's what it looks like when we're in a storm situation. Now, back on June 10th of 14, the mayor invited us to meet with the different heads of the different departments here at City Hall, and it was talked about that the city will in fact scope the pipes to make sure there is blockage, no, there is no blockage. But he also did state, because the Lake Clare Retention Area was built incorrectly, is there a way that the water can be pumped to the place it intended to go during a storm? Okay? And the city engineer was there, and we talked about what was wrong with the design and et cetera. All right, so then, now we move forward another year, and here is March 9th, 2015, and this was from Mr. Balling. I know that, I know that you're, I'm sorry, I know that you're, I'm sorry, I know that you are interested in keeping abreast of city initiatives for drainage improvements in your subdivision. Let me offer the following response to your questions. We have approximately $100,000 in the current budget to improve the efficiency of the storm sewer, which if not completed by April 30, will be carried into the next fiscal year. When completed, this will provide some incremental relief to the subdivision drainage pattern. To my knowledge, nothing was ever done. So these are kind of our takeaways. Again, we've been dealing with this for quite a while. The Lake Clare Retention Pond was designed incorrectly, but was approved by the City of Prospect Heights to be built anyway. St. Alphonsus Church adds to the flooding problem in Lake Clare. The Lake Clare Retention Pond did not flood between 1987 and 2001, according to our neighbors, and I can substantiate everything that I put in this presentation, because we can go back to that document, this is just in talking to our neighbors, because we didn't move in until 99, until the new church opened. Even after numerous meetings with the city and church during construction and being given assurances that we would be safe from the stormwater runoff, within three weeks of completion, we completely flooded for the first time. Stormwater, I'm sorry, stormwater studies have been conducted, and the recommendations have largely been ignored by the city council. We are confused as to why the city council continuously has ignored the stormwater issues in Lake Clare states, especially when you consider that funding had been appropriated to help remediate the problem. So what we are here tonight asking, the city, mayor, and administration, implement the recommendations made in the City of Prospect Heights Drainage Study from 2012 and help us protect our home from further flooding. Restrict the amount of stormwater released from St. Alphonsus Retention Area to the Lake Clare Pond, Retention Pond. Enlarge the restrictors between Lake Clare Retention Pond and the Shires Retention Pond. Create more storage capacity in the Shires Pond by excavating the land. Removing dirt is far less expensive than construction. Thank you. I don't know, any questions?
Questions, please.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Speak. Patrick, do you have those pictures I sent to you?
Yeah. They're on the surface.
Oh, the flooding ones? Oh, sorry.
Do you need to, want to see them now?
Yeah, the flooding pictures. There's just a couple. No? Of course you may, as long as the mayor agrees.
Laura has the floor, and then let's go from there. What do we have, Laura?
Okay, so I just wanted to show you, you're not the only residential area experiencing flooding issues. These are just a couple photos of flooding on the east side. I completely sympathize with your position. I wasn't aware of your problem, I wasn't on the council until May 2015, but I do know that this area has reached out several times about flooding, and they were told that the property was built on a retention area, that's just how it is, and nothing could be done. So I completely understand your frustrations, dealt with it, have plenty of neighbors who have dealt with it. Hopefully, there's something we can do to help, but that being said, there are a lot of areas in the city that do flood, and that is something that we would need to look at closely with our budget, because if we help one person with a flooding issue and someone else has the same exact flooding issue, we can't not help them. So we'd have to find a way to be able to help everyone, and I do know that other people have come to the city complaining about flooding issues. So, I mean, I think you had a very nice presentation. Hopefully, there's something that the council can look into with our engineers and come up with a solution, something maybe that isn't as costly in the beginning, to see if that would help and where we can go from there. But I just want to say that, you know, other people are having the same problem, and we do need to look at the budget to see how much we can do to help everyone.
I have two questions to ask you. First of all, why were any of these buildings, including our home, then allowed to be built? Why were any of these buildings, including our home, allowed to be built on something that they knew was already a flooding issue that should have never happened? And B, we were told, as on one of those slides, that there was $100,000 set aside to work for our problem alone, and it was, nothing was ever done.
To your first question, I think some of the places were built when I was a small child, so I don't know why it was approved, so I'm afraid I can't answer that question. But I, my comment was the same, why could you build an entire complex on an area that was made to retain water? I've asked that same question myself. The $100,000, I was there, that was before I was on the council, so I don't know what their budget was at that time, so I personally can't answer that, but maybe it's something the council can look into.
But it's obvious during, with the study that was done, that our house, they made our house the overflow, and it wasn't supposed to go that way. So to me, that is a blatant mistake that should be taken care of.
And if that's what happened, then I think that it should be looked into.
Because it's not going where it's supposed to go, it's coming to me, and I honestly, my health can't take it anymore. I'm just done.
Yeah, I mean, if something was done after the fact by the city that caused your place to flood more, then I definitely think that it should be a priority on the list of properties that we look into. That's information that myself personally, I would need to get from the engineer confirming what was done, what wasn't done. I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to make any assumptions on that level. Like I said, I just want to be, you know, completely upfront with you, I feel your pain, I completely sympathize with you, and I hope there's something we can do, but we are going to need to look at everyone that's complained to us about flooding, and then get with the engineer, what caused it, what didn't, does the city have any responsibility, and what funds are in the budget currently to be able to help you out.
But just remember, in any of those pictures you look, none of our other neighbors, it's all coming to us. It's only our home in that area. So that, to me, that means that it was built incorrectly, and it was allowed to be built incorrectly.
All right, thank you. Alderman Williamson?
One question, we keep saying that it was built incorrectly. Who said that it was built incorrectly? Is that documented?
I talked to the city engineer, who was his.
Steve Perez.
Yeah, we were sitting at the meeting right next to us, he said that, you know, the overflow is supposed to.
Was it Steve Perez or Steve?
It was the engineer that was there.
Steve Skeber?
No.
There was a.
Katia?
It's Perez.
Yeah. That the overflow is supposed to go away from homes, not toward homes. And that's where, even the mayor said, okay, because it was built incorrectly, and that's where I think, you know, and we had discussed that prior to that, so somewhere in this conversation.
I just, you made mention of it in your presentation, your wife made mention of it, I was just curious, you know, who is saying that it is.
It may have started with Doberman, I call him Doberman, what was his real name?
Mark Doberman?
Oh, Mark Toberman.
Toberman, yes. I think that's where the whole thing started to begin with. And then Steve Perez came in, and he did some active work in the last three years, as a matter of fact. Questions? This side?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
There are a couple of unique things that I think need to be brought up. Your house is kind of unique, if we, we don't have to go back to the picture, but yours is one of the only houses in that neighborhood that has like a basement that goes down grade. Your basement is below the grade. Reverse, oh, sorry, I'm trying to call. Right. So I mean, it's the only one that happens to be in the worst spot, so when it floods, it comes around the front of your house, and you can see you put those boards up to try and stop it from coming in the garage. So you flood from the garage back because it comes around your house. Correct, it just comes around the lower level. So it's a little unique, it's a unique situation. You referenced the Baxter-Woodman Study, the 2012 study was done after the last major flood that we had. Almost every town has what they call Baxter-Woodman Study from 2012, because everybody was inundated with water. In that, it was not a prescription to say, do this, it was a, what is wrong, so it told us, there are a bunch of other neighborhoods, as Laura had said, that have problems too, and also in the basement, you know, filling their basements up because the water runs up over their foundation. So I think we do need to look at flooding, I agree, you have a problem, and we could, if we had somebody here for every neighborhood or every house that came, we would be here every week hearing people. The places don't flood unless there is a problem. Something went wrong for someplace to flood, the floods just don't happen. So obviously, if there's a problem without that, the reason why that pond is there, going back to when I remember that place being built, is there was a spring that was there, otherwise that would have been another house. So that's a spring-fed pond, it's not really a detention pond for the neighborhood, the back area is supposed to be, but that's a spring-fed. And the water just passes through, comes in. Correct. Correct.
But if it's not a detention pond, then why is St. Alphonsus water allowed to come to the pond?
It's the same reason that the water from your pond, you want it to go to the back, would go from there, would go from there to the next neighborhood, back to the creek. Everybody's water unfortunately comes into their neighborhood, and it has to leave their neighborhood. Everybody's happy when it leaves, but obviously, if there's a problem when it comes in, it causes a problem. I agree with you 100%. The problem is, we've had, flooding is probably next to streets, which has now been addressed, but flooding was the number two issue that we always had, and it's number two only because it only happens every now and then. That Baxter-Woodman Report was tens of millions of dollars worth of work throughout the city that needed to be done, and I don't even think it fully addressed the east side of town. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, we have to, we discussed this at the budget meeting in February, I hope the mayor picks it up as an issue that we need to talk about, it's important, flooding is extremely important, we need to address it, we need to prioritize our dollars. The $100,000, I don't, was not assigned to your neighborhood, he might have said it, he might have said it, but I could just tell you how our budgets work. We fund general categories, we don't necessarily fund specific flooding areas, it would have been unusual to do that. It has flooded before 2001, I remember Mayor Rochford at the time went to whoever lived in your house before you, when they had a big event, and Christopher Perniac was there. That was 2001, that was the night of Christopher Perniac's wedding, and Ghul came to our house, the mayor came to our house.
Chief, please.
So that was 2001. Yeah, we understand. I agree with all the fixes, I agree with all the solutions, I don't necessarily agree with digging, because every time, it makes sense to me, but every time you talk to a civil engineer, you don't make a pond more, you don't give it more capacity by going deeper, you only make it, give it more capacity by going out. So. Are you talking about a wet pond or a dry pond? This is the dry pond. Right. I think with our pond, our Lake Clare pond, if you dig it, it's spring-fed, it's just. Right, it's going to keep filling up. That's a dry pond. But the problem is, is we can't create a second order problem like Joe always says by doing something.
You might come up with a vote.
We can't.
We have to hear audio.
The idea of increasing the restrictor can only be done if somebody says we can, it's not just like we can go pull it out and put a bigger one in, but I do agree, we need to look at them, and I'd ask that you ask the mayor to commit to this, and let's have some meetings about this. I'm available.
I've sat in your house, we've had the same discussions.
Yes, you have, you've been wonderful.
And of course, we want to commit to this. We had other commitments that didn't happen, maybe the plans weren't finished, you made that point, maybe that's really an important thing to look at. Joe has a point about DMWRD, we can't screw around with the restrictors.
Right, but I also have the documentation from when the property was originally built back in the late 70s, that says that the restrictor that we have can be increased, I think it's like a 5.7 now, it can go up to over an 8. So I have documentation that we, we actually got all the plates of survey, and there's documentation that shows in one of the papers that we have, that that restrictor can in fact be enlarged, and the fact that Shires Retention Pond is not maxing out, I mean, that was in the report, it's not maxing out. So, you know, I mean, there might be small, I think to replace that restrictor with $7,000, you know, if there's some small things that can be done incrementally, maybe not to do everything all at once, but there's, you know, they gave us a roadmap, right, they gave us a roadmap, and, you know, if we have a five-year plan, or even, you know, we invested in our house because we hope we can be there for the next 20 years until we can't walk up those, all those steps. So, I mean, we've invested, invested in that, and you could see that property. So if we have a long-range plan, and we go piece by piece, but they've given us a very good roadmap, you know, so, but I'm available.
I just wanted to say something, as far as the dry pond, where the water's supposed to flow to, our pond went over its banks, thank God it didn't surround our house this time. I went down there and took a picture, there's a little puddle of water, that's all that was in there, nothing else. I was like, come on, that should have been, had water.
And that's kind of a prompt that heard of.
And if I could ask, that was part of your presentation, but you have a longer written presentation than we saw here. Is that what you said earlier? These are excerpts from-
No, no, I have a topogra-, I mean, I've been doing research since 2001, and so I have the topography. I have lots and lots of research, and that's why I'd be more than happy to sit down with our alderman and the city engineer and people to say, okay, this is, I've done all this legwork, plus now I'm semi-retired, so I have plenty of time to do more legwork. So use me. You know, I'm not going to charge the city for, I mean, this is my home, so.
My question goes to, what's our next step? And the way I see it is, if you have this with you or can give it to us, Steve Perez is not here tonight. Gwalt Hamilton is here.
Could you please email that to me? Your presentation.
Actually, this is on your, the city. So you have my presentation.
Okay, so we have it already.
Yeah.
But if you need it emailed or-
It'd be easier, because if you could email to me, then I can get it to our contracted engineer quickly. It just makes it quicker, so.
Absolutely. I'm going to make a quick comment. I looked through the reports that came from Public Works this past week. One of them was clear outflows. I hope to God it doesn't look like that now, if that's a recent picture. That was taken Sunday. Because I always see clear outflows on Public Works' reports, so.
That was Sunday.
I'll be, I'll be driving by there tomorrow afternoon. I'm hoping that that could be corrected by then, because that shouldn't be like that. That's something that shouldn't happen. And you know where that's located. I know it's, I know exactly where it is.
Isn't the, the one that's covered by a bush?
Yeah.
That's broken sides.
Well, they actually, I walked over there, they did put concrete around it, but if you look at the outflow from our pond, Lake Clear Pond, if you, if you're on theory and you look across, you can't see because there's a big, there's a big bush in front of it, and it hangs down into the water. So.
Chainsaw.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
All right. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you giving us the time. I encourage you too to come here every month and bug us about it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you the truth. I would love for, it's probably the number one complaint to people in town is flooding, so it's not you. I know you're one person who came here and gave a presentation, but there are countless people that need the help.
It's coming to our home.
I get it, I get it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we also have a request to present to the board from Mr. Marius Foltta of 1225 Stratford Road, and the subject of discussion is 1300 Rand Road.
Yes, good evening. Marius Foltta, 1225 Stratford Road in Prospect Heights. I've been following, following the presentations on the PCBA and the first reading in the city council regarding the sit-down restaurant, sit-down restaurant on the Rand Road, 1300 Rand Road. Obviously, as I see it, this is, everything is about gambling, and, you know, I'm just trying to get the information. I was present in the PCBA meeting, and I was saying that, that, you know, the owners were presenting that they're going to be having a 15 people, tables for 50 people, but it's going to be only two servers. And one of the aldermen was asking that what's going to happen if the whole 50 people is going to show up, and who's going to serve them? And also, there were questions about that if they can be open for, not only for 21, but everybody can come over and use the restaurant. They declined it just because they said they're going to be the high penalties if somebody's going to be gambling. So for me, obviously, everything is about gambling. This, in this area, we have already two restaurants very close to the city, to the high school, and when they have gambling machines. I'm not a gambler myself, so I was kind of wondering if we should even come over here and talk to you about this, just because I don't know nothing about gambling. But I have a friend with a big family, and he gambled out whole house. And it was just little machines, just nothing big, nothing big. He didn't go to the casinos. Any money he was trying to save, he was just going into the gambling. And it was, I was heartbroken, just because I have five kids, and they have to sell the house, foreclose on the house, and move out to the rental. I went on, so I started searching and did some research. It's, I'm not going to bore you with the numbers, and you probably know those numbers, but 750,000 of Americans between the ages of 14 to 21, they have gambling problems. The gambling problem is most common problems with the gambling is divorce and marital deprecation, bankruptcy, homelessness, and depression and suicide. So do we need actually third restaurant, gambling restaurant in our area? I'm calling this, you know, obviously, I am against it, and I hope that you guys are going to vote against it, just because I don't want my Prospect Heights, where I've been living for so many years, to become the little Las Vegas. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The next item of business is old business, item A, and this is consideration of an ordinance and staff memo approving a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant at 1300 North Rand Road for Elsie's Place Cafe. This is second reading tonight, and we have representatives of the company. You know Mr. Knoblock and Mr. Lieberman.
Gentlemen, podium is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Chuck has done a lion's share of the work for our company, and I just wanted to come up here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. Some of them may be questions that you've asked before, but we're certainly open to answer anything that we can, and also wanted to tell you that we appreciate the opportunity. You don't get a lot of second opportunities. You know, we sought out and looked for a new site here because we like the area, but we also have enjoyed working with the mayor and his staff and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you again, and welcome questions that you have tonight, so.
Thank you. Chuck?
We've talked a lot already, so if we can discuss further, I'm open to it, but-
Well, there's some points made by the speaker ahead of you. Is there anything you can tell us about, I mean, everybody knows the gambling statistics. Everybody knows in this entire country, people go broke, they have their problems. Everybody, we have a racetrack right down the street. We do have two locations across the street. I'll ask the chief. Chief, we have a prospect, and Alderman Ludwicksen corrected me last time, is it 10 or 11 that we have, where the video game is located now? Alderman Ludwicksen?
Yes.
Yes, it's 10 or 11. I agree with you.
It's 10 or 11.
Yes.
10 that actually have it, probably about 20 that are qualified to have it. There's only 10 do.
Which don't have it. Chief, problems with our 10 video gaming places?
We have-
Drunks, fights.
Very little. I, we've had, maybe only a few calls that I know of that we've had any problems in those.
It's over the last two years we're talking.
Yeah, since we've started, it's very, very few problems in the, in the restaurants, bars that have the casinos related to the gambling.
I don't think anyone would deny that gambling can be an addiction, and we know that alcohol can be an addiction, or pot, or whatever it is. That's the nature of our society, and that's what unfortunately does happen. And it's a sad story that he told us tonight.
Yeah, I think, you know, to go with that mayor, I don't think-
An issue.
No, I think it is an issue, and we haven't had too many thing, people that we've seen, but we do, we will mention it to them, but the people that come in don't stay that long by us, so it's really hard to, to be honest, to be able to tell if they've got an addiction or if they go somewhere else, because there are other, a lot of other options since the state allowed gaming. But I would say that our average customer stays for maybe an hour to two, sometimes less or more. So I really haven't seen a problem with frequent gambling, but if somebody hangs around a lot and you see that they're spending money, we would do, we will come up and talk to them and address it, but it really hasn't happened much that I can think of. Again, the customer rotates through our business so often and don't stay longer. Again, if they're sitting around all day, four, five, six, eight hours, you tend to watch them and maybe make a suggestion or two, but to the, to the person's speech, as I can completely understand it, it's something that we watch all the time.
All right, and we have off-track betting on the west side, et cetera. So we've got a lot, I wouldn't say a lot, but we've got a good amount of experience. Addressed this situation again and again. Is this going to be a restaurant, or is it going to be nobody at the tables and everybody playing slot machines?
Well, we've got over, and Dan can answer. I think it's 41 or 51 seats. We've expanded the menu. I did bring, you know, but it's hard to read, Dan. I got, you know, the, excuse me, mayor. The kitchen's been, I mean, we're investing a lot of money.
Chuck, we did see that last time.
Yeah, but we just did the kitchen a little different because we had a fryer, a cup table and things like that, but the effort's being made because we would like to really do a better job, and talking to Alderman there and about, with a better job with our food, and we don't give up on it. We even brought our monthly calendars, the fact that we advertise, promote food on a regular, constant basis, and that's, and believe it, if you get them in the door to eat food, maybe they will gamble, you know? But again, it go, the two go hand in hand, but the restaurant part of it is very important. In the restaurant, we've got a full kitchen there, microwave, convection oven, fryer, steam table, prep table. We've got all the necessary equipment to make a full menu, and we plan to do that.
All right. The other issue that was brought up last time and this time, no one under 21 can come in after 7 o'clock. Can somebody on this podium here tell me if, you know, whether the Ale House, for example, place on, towards Wolf and Palatine Road, been there for years, under different names, does the Ale House allow children to come in and eat after 7 o'clock?
Yes.
Anybody know that answer?
Yes, I've been there with my kids. Rocky Van Der Suez.
So, you know, a good point is, well, you're obviously only encouraging gambling if you're going to cut out the ability to bring kids. I know nationwide, I'm very familiar with this, nationwide, you cannot come in even with a stroller to the total video gaming operations. Why restrict having kids? You're going to have people, kids, we had them just not too long ago, that have fake IDs, they come in anyway, et cetera, et cetera. Why close it down to the potential of selling more food?
I'll let you answer that.
No problem. I think for, for us, the, and I think Chuck alluded to it last time, the, and you can, you can see this on the IGB website, the penalties for underage gaming are between $5,000 and $10,000 and up, and liquor licenses and gaming licenses are very hard to get. And for our business and what we've done and what we've looked at, it's, it is a difficult proposition for us to change course when we have nine other stores as 21 and up. And additionally, you know, we've looked at this site, you know, in trying to look at it from a compromise standpoint, you know, we're taking 2,600 square feet, adding more things to this location, which we haven't done in the past, to try and be more accommodating to the past concerns that Prospect Heights had when we were here last year. So at this point, I mean, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to say, you know, I could say, and Chuck could say differently, but we're not comfortable with how our business is set up at this time to do that. I don't think it's being honest and truthful to say that we can when we're not set up to do so at this time.
All right. Alderman Dolik?
I know it's been discussed in the past, but just as far as revenue coming in, just in terms of percentages, what do you expect to bring in as far as food sales versus liquor sales or beer and wine, or whatever you're serving, and gambling? I think that kind of gives a clearer definition of what kind of an establishment is this that we're looking at.
Well, I think, you know, as we discussed last time, there's a $2,000 figure, and as I relooked at the menu and things like that, I think $5,000 a month or better is a really attainable goal. I really would like to do $2,000 to $3,000 if we control. Now, that might be a little bit of an exaggeration, but I think it can be done with the menu that we're going to have. And the, because this is what people have asked for, this is what we're going to provide. I don't know what the gaming revenue will be, and I think you probably-
I can tell you.
Yeah, I think-
I've spent way too much, I'm, I come to you guys looking for a job because I know so much about your gaming side.
But, you know, the gaming, I'm not sure, depending on how, you know, hell does the budget on the gaming, I control as much as the food.
Well, we have multiple 200,000-plus locations.
Per month.
No, per year, per year.
Per year.
So you're talking 15, what would that be? Between 15, $18,000 a month in gaming. So there's no way you can't be expecting that. I would imagine if you're, if somebody's coming and putting the games in and you're doing all this investment in the kitchen equipment, that you know that already, so.
The liquor could be anywhere from 500 to, you know, our average is probably 2,000 a month, you know, somewhere a little higher, so maybe 500, $1,000 a weekend liquor sales if you're in line.
This is a location where we understand and wanted to do things differently, because as I think Chuck and I had mentioned in previous meetings, you know, our background is food and gaming, so we have backgrounds in both, and we'd like to sell more food. I think when I told you that last year, you asked me a pointed question. It's not for us, if we, if we can sell more food, if we can sell more drinks, if we can do all those things, it's better for our business. And, you know, the location that we've identified here, I know has been vacant a long time. It's a location that, you know, is not the ideal setup from a retail standpoint with how the location, you know, it's kind of goes out onto a point, but, you know, we felt like those are risks that we felt like we had to take and needed to take to be here, because we knew that if we came here again, we couldn't have the same package as we did last time. And so we've worked really hard to try and accommodate that and to try and do some things differently than we did last time. And, you know, if this, if we are lucky enough to be approved and this is successful, this type of idea could be a prototype for future stores, because as an entrepreneurial family, you know, opportunities change and can be, come in different shapes and sizes sometimes, so.
Alderman Muster?
With the food, you said you're going to have like, where you can actually, it's not just all going to be like frozen, heat it up, but you'll actually be making some of the food items fresh, or?
A lot, yeah. There'll be sandwiches made by, we have a prep table, a sandwich table, fryer. All sandwiches will be assembled on spot when it's ordered.
Okay.
Fryer items also too. The only thing that will come out of the freezer is the fried items, which will be the buffalo wings. We have some Reuben bites we've worked on, it's a new thing, pickle butt, you know, those types of things. Fries will all come out of the fryer. The sandwiches will all be handmade.
Okay, so definitely different and better than the existing smaller ones that we have. Thank you.
So the stuff that in the past that would come out of the back, but would go into the convection oven, there's a few things, but, you know, like the pizza, we have a special company make pizza just for us, Dreen's. They're on the south end of Chicago. So that would be, that's comes in frozen and we reheat that, because without the right equipment, it's really hard to do pizza fresh, so they do it for us. So we bring it in. All the rest, we make by hand on the sandwich table, prep table, and the fryer area.
Alderman Rosenthal?
No questions.
Alderman Williamson?
No questions.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
I have a few.
I have a few. I think it's important for the council to recognize that you're coming to us for a special use for a sit-down restaurant. You haven't even made an application yet for a liquor license yet, but that's coming, I'm sure. There's no secret, you have to have the liquor license to get to video gaming. You've probably been the most frank and honest about what you're doing than any other people that have come to us for these type of locations. So I will give you credit for that. Big credit for that. You made a comment that you're going to do a better job with the food. My question is, if you're here for a special use, why is that not job one?
Do you do a better job with food?
No, you shouldn't want to do it better. That should be your number one job if this is a restaurant. And again, these are, there's probably no real response. I'm not looking for you to tell me how great the sandwiches are going to be or anything else. But LCI is purely a gaming company, correct?
Well.
LCI Illinois.
LCI Illinois was designed from doing research from, you know, these other places, and you see these other companies, you have them here. We believe that we could take gaming and food and do it differently. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier in this discussion, you know, our background is in both. And so when we came here, we wanted to try and do things our own way.
Are you aware that, I mean, this council, I know I would, I'd be jumping up and down and twisting every arm I can to give you a sales tax rebate on your food sales if you came in and did a real restaurant. Now, honest to God, I mean, we just gave one to Thornton's for a gas station. We are hungry, no pun intended, for people to come in here and build a location. I was just that, as the mayor tells us, we should do this, and I did do it on Cinco de Mayo, went to the new Mexican restaurant in the mall right across the street from you. Huge investment in the location. There had to be twenty people there, five people behind an open kitchen that you can see all the servers, the bar people, the manager. And the first thought in my mind was, you know what would make this a blockbuster? Video gaming. So the idea that I don't believe in video gaming is, and I know the mayor doesn't believe I do, he thinks I have something against it, is far from the truth, because I think video gaming saves, has saved a lot of bar and restaurants in Illinois. And I just have a hard time when somebody comes in and wants to just do, there's no secret, and please don't tell me otherwise, because I don't want to have to bicker back and forth about it, that without the gaming, you won't open a restaurant, correct? Would you open a restaurant without, unless you had the liquor license to get gaming?
Not how our business is currently constituted, no.
What do you mean by that?
Meaning, we've created a business model that combines these things. So to take that out, you know, you're basically doing another startup business and trying to create a business on the fly, which we're not set up to do at this time. It's, we don't have that set up in our, our business model. And we don't have a, you know, it's like starting another business from scratch.
I understand. I mean, I, the two hundred, and I understand the size of this restaurant's bigger, it's bigger than.
It's double almost, or more. And, you know, as I said earlier, we understood coming in here a second time and understood the concerns from the previous conversations that we had. And we're trying to do things differently to accommodate some of the concerns. I understand the eighteen and over is a concern.
It's not, frankly, just to be all honest about this, I don't have a concern with the eighteen and over. If you truly are, it's twenty-one and over though, right? Not eighteen?
No, no, but eighteen and over is what we were asked about, would we consider doing? Twenty-one is over, and over is what we're set up to do.
No, you were asked to do like kids.
Because Hershey's right there, right. And all the other restaurants in that mall have specials for the kids. Come in and eat, you know, here's a special for pizza, pizza and a coke. These same restaurants that sell alcohol, that have video gaming, and they all seem to be okay. Nobody is, nobody's getting in trouble in these locations with video gaming. I don't think video gaming brings problems. I don't think it does. I just think that we as a city have no way to control it being non-home rule, because you, you have, you have to have a liquor license. It's the only threshold. And you have to have food to have a liquor license, so you have to have a little bit of food. I just frankly think, I don't know why the rest of the council, and maybe they do see it, maybe they don't, doesn't realize that your request for a restaurant license to us is not really for a restaurant, it's really to get a video gaming location. I get it, and I would be all for that if you were to truly do a restaurant, and I would be all for a sales tax rebate if you come in here and build a killer restaurant and have video gaming. Honest to God.
May I respond to Alderman Ludvixen, if you're done?
Yep.
I mean, I'm a little confused, because you're saying they're coming for a restaurant license only for gambling, but I think they clearly stated that their model is a combination of the two. And so that's why, like, I mean, when you go to a bank for a loan for a business plan, you have your business plan, their business plan, their model includes both of it. So they do need the restaurant, because they're not set up to do just gaming either. They're set up for both. So I think they're asking for the restaurant license because they do have the restaurant part, it's always been a part of their business, they're not adding it in just to get approval here to do the gaming. I think they go hand in hand, and that's how they're set up. So, I mean, I'm just saying, because you're saying that the rest of the council, which includes me, doesn't see it, but I don't see it the way you see it, and.
Well, I'm talking purely financially. I've asked other restaurants in town what they would do if they did twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and all of them said they would do it for a couple months and then wouldn't be around anymore. So it's more the volume. I get it that they're going to have food there, because they have to, because they can't get the liquor license, and if they don't have the liquor license, they can't get the video gaming. I get it, it's part of their model, but you're talking, their revenue on, if they're doing even, let's say, five thousand dollars a month, I mean, you're still just a fraction of your business is going to be in alcohol and liquor and food sales as compared to video gaming. So it's, I get it, it's part of the model, but just to stick a piece in.
Well, and if someone could have a passion, where they like the food and they like what they're doing, but they do need another component to be able to have the other part. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with adding components into something that you like doing to make it stronger as a whole, instead of having one piece, or this piece. I mean, you know, if they like food and they've talked about improving on their food, and that's what they want to do, and for their model to work, gaming is a part of it, I don't necessarily think that that's negative. I think they're.
Oh, I agree with you. I like the food so much, I'm willing to give a sales tax rebate if they were to bring a true restaurant here. I agree with you a hundred percent. It is part of the model, but it's, it's not, it's backwards. We need those people that are going to sponsor the softball teams, that are going to be advertising. It's one thing I noticed about some of these locations, they don't do anything.
So do you not support the small business people, then? You only let the big ones pack?
Absolutely support the small businesses, because I don't think Union Ale House is a small, I don't think they're a big business. They're a small business. And I get it, I'm on the, I'm on the opposite side here, but I just, my fear is, and.
I'm just playing devil's advocate with you.
It's coming, that we're going to have twenty of these locations. We're already in the top thirty, if you look at just cities and pull out counties in gaming. Because some of the, some of the gaming rankings are by counties, because they don't have cities. So we're, as far as, as far as revenue and.
Pat, didn't you tell me we only have two of the ones that you consider smaller?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like we have a ton of this smaller restaurant slash video gaming establishment. So it's not like we're saturated with them. At this point, you actually suggested that I go to one to see what it was like. I took a friend, because I don't gamble. So, and, you know, what I've learned from taking her and talking with my other friends is, some people actually like it, because they don't want to go to a larger bar, where you're more likely to have people who are drunk and it's louder, or the large, you know, casinos. They want to have a place where they can go in, have a bite, eat, have a drink or two with their friends, you know, and, you know, play some slots for fifteen, twenty, thirty, you know what I mean? Just get out, have a little social timing, and, you know, they kind of like having it. So.
Which we have.
I mean, two.
And they're never full.
But like, we say we're saturated, but we only have two of them, so.
The one near here, it's half empty.
And their establishment seems to be, you know, different in their approach compared to the two that we do have. So, I mean, I do give them credit for that. I think it has a lot more of what you are looking for. And I just think that needs to be considered, too.
Right, we had some great comments. I will say that the rebate on sales taxes will come personally from Alderman Ludvixen.
I wrote it down.
Well, I'll tell you, if we hit the sale of the food goals I'd like to hit and go on, I won't ask for it because of.
Right, you won't need it.
I promise you that if you open, I will be there with, we'll see how you do. I will be there, I'll sit there with eight, ten people and see how it goes.
And I'll meet you there.
And I'll call you.
And let me say this, we can both walk there. So it's not like we have to drive and have too many drinks, you know? We can get a ride home from our police department, I'm sure.
Whoa.
So, all right, I.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, just real quick on the problem gaming that you brought up, which is, which is an important thing to discuss. The state of Illinois is concerned about problem gaming.
Right.
And one of the things that they're looking at is, if you go to, you know, more casino-type establishments, they have ways of what they call player tracking or card tracking, things of that sort, for promotion purposes. But in Illinois, they want to utilize something like that to track problem gamblers, because in casinos, that's something that they have, you know, people's information on file, and they're trying to develop that for the bar and tavern market. So it is something that not only do we try and keep an eye on to the best of our ability, which is difficult, because they don't have those mechanisms, but the state is creating that because of that issue. So I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that.
So that's coming.
It's coming.
All right. What's our next stop here? What are we doing?
We need a motion to approve.
To approve what?
The special use.
Special use for?
For a sit-down restaurant at thirteen hundred North Rand Road for Elsie's Place.
Okay. Can we have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvixen?
No.
Alderman Williamson?
No.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Motion passes three, two. What's their next step? What do they do next? Open up tomorrow?
No, they would, they can get the.
Open tomorrow.
Work with the building, building commissioner to get that process going.
All right, back up the question a moment. Mr. Peterson, you're down at the end there?
Yes, I am.
What was the vote on the PBC?
The PCBA was five to one.
Okay, so we had a majority there also. All right, clearly said, clearly done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm telling you, it's going to take more than one person.
So, Mayor Peterson, we need a waiver.
We haven't done that in a while.
Yes.
I'll argue with you, but.
Requested waiver first reading?
Which, where are we?
We're here.
Here, what happened here?
That's.
Okay, so that's, under A. Okay, Joe, on a new business, we have a request for a waiver of the first reading.
Yes, sir. This is.
What is the issue?
This has gone to the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, that received a unanimous recommendation. This is an ordinance and staff memo approving a subdivision granting a variance for twelve oh one North Drury Lane. It's, as I recall, Mr. Peterson, it's for a subdivision and allows the construction of a subdivision of lots and allowing the construction of a swimming pool.
Correct. The applicant, Mr. Papa Nicholas, is here this evening. He has both twelve oh one and twelve oh nine Drury Lane. He's proposing to consolidate the two lots. The one home has already been demolished, so as a full lot, he's coming in to consolidate those. And then he had requested a variation for an accessory structure, height variation, which was recommended for approval five to one by the PCBA at last, their last month meeting. So Mr. Nicholas is here tonight, in case you have any questions.
All right, would you step to the podium? So you are going, identify yourself first, please.
Joe Papa Nicholas, twelve oh one North Drury Lane.
Joe, you're going to build a swimming pool on the sideline, is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay, and you went to PCBA. Would you repeat if you already said it once?
The applicant is proposing an accessory structure for a pool house. The pool house exceeds the, proposed to exceed the city limit by approximately twelve feet, twenty-seven foot tall over the fifteen foot height. And then also, too, there is a couple conditions. Because of the size of the pool house, no additional storage buildings, and this, this pool house could never be used for a dwelling unit, is what was the condition.
What was the vote there?
Five to one.
Five to one also. All right. So we're looking to waive the first reading. Apparently you want to get it under construction, obviously.
It would be appreciated, yes.
And let's go with waiving the first reading first. Any other questions? Although we can have some later, too. Anyone?
I'll ask once we.
Only one?
I don't tend to hold it up, I just have some questions.
I move that we waive the first reading.
I can ask now or after.
Well, let's get an approval.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
I move that we waive the first reading for granting the variance of twelve oh one North Drury Lane.
Second?
There's no vote on the first reading, is there?
Yeah.
All right, so we can say all in favor, I suppose. I think we're all in favor, right?
We need, we need a roll call, because we're changing the rules there, so.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvixen?
Aye.
First reading has been waived, five votes on the aye side. Moving on to approval of the request for a waiver, not the waiver, approving a request for the items we talked about, we need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, we have a second discussion, please.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I just had a quick question. I just wanted to confirm one thing. The, and I think I heard this correctly when I listened to the hearing at the zoning board, the secondary structure is not going to be an inhabited structure. In other words, there's no one that's going to be living in that second structure, is that correct?
Yes.
It's just a pool house? It's not like somebody's going to have an apartment in the back?
No.
Nothing like that? Okay, that's all I have.
Alderman Ludvixen?
Yes, there were some concerns about the lights. Currently, you have that tennis or basketball court in the back. Are there going to be new lights with this?
There will be, but not that type of use. So there'll be more, it'll be more accent lighting, obviously for safety reasons and night decor, but nothing like that. And then I was also requested a look into maybe some shrouds for the two east light poles to.
Right.
Help.
Nobody's really saying, I mean, they just noticed it.
Yeah, the first time I heard it in two years was last week, so.
Right, right.
I will, I'm looking into that with Acuity and Lithonia, for some shrouds on those light poles.
The other thing is, this, this detail that we have, or the drawing that we have, shows a detail of a, of a, I don't know what you call it, a retention wall. I don't even know if it's a retention wall. It says retaining wall. Is that, is that running along the lot, or is it only at the, the two shorter locations? Because I'll give you an example, there's a, there's a home not too far from you that built a little retaining wall between the two lots. I've never been a fan of that.
So the retaining wall was actually the original design intent when I built twelve oh one North Drury, and that was strictly just to keep the soil back, because that's a much higher elevation at twelve oh nine. So I actually changed that design in lieu of the retaining wall, which was strictly just to keep that soil back. I was able to receive permission from the previous owner of twelve oh nine to kind of cut his grade back north, because I didn't want a wall behind the tennis court.
No, I think yours does a good job.
So therefore, there's a fence that you see, and then we tapered the grade back. Now that we're looking at the twelve oh nine design, I'm looking to put a retaining wall back, but move it a little further north, but yet then infill the grade on the north side, because I want to maintain proper pitch with that pool deck to make sure it's as minimal as possible to she drain the water. So it's nothing more than just to be able to backfill the north side now.
Okay.
And it'll be a stone, it'll be a stone wall.
But that wall, the one that runs east-west on the north side, is, the only one you're going to have is, it's pretty far off the lot line. And it only goes, it's that, it's a, it looks like a Z.
It's about sixty-five, oh, that, that's off the side of the deck. That's just to accommodate the grade change. So there's about five to six foot grade change from the northeast corner of twelve oh nine to the southwest corner.
Okay.
And that deck has to be one percent pitch. So just because of the natural terrain of that lot, there will be a little slight retaining wall holding back the deck structure at that Z location. I was referring to the retaining wall behind the tennis court. So it'll actually, there'll be another wall in between the tennis court and south of that pool area.
That's only on your lot anyways.
It's all on my property, yep.
Doesn't matter, right, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else, please? Yes, sir.
Yeah. In light of the discussion we just had about drainage, how's this going to impact the neighborhood? I mean, do they?
Engineering.
Tap into the sewer system, or?
The, this lot has its own storm sewer system set up. It also has its own, going to be tying in separately to the sanitary system. So those have all been looked at by engineering, and we'll have to meet our standards for permitting.
Okay, but it won't impact any of the surrounding?
No.
You are aware this area gets wet? All right, I mean, this is a.
I, we had, we had the massive hundred-year storm come through, where we had the eight inches of rain overnight. I want to say it was about three, three to four years ago. I was in my due diligence period at twelve oh one.
Okay.
So obviously, I saw the flooding, and you just design accordingly. I haven't had water since we moved in. It's been two years, so.
Okay.
That's what I intend to do. It's going to be a comparable design at twelve oh nine that I did at twelve oh one, so.
Alderman Williamson, you all right?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's have, we have a motion, we had a discussion, let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvixen?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Motion passes five. Is there, just a quick one?
Sure.
Uh, we're, uh, out of gym time a lot at St. Peters, can we play your backyard?
Sure, just text me 24 hours in advance.
Yeah, you did, last question, you did build the ice rink in Mount Prospect, right?
Yes.
How's that going?
Good, great.
We would have loved it here, 10 acres of land, but I didn't get to you soon enough.
Yeah, maybe for the next one.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, as we don't have any more items with the audience members, we can go back to item eight, staff elected officials.
Yes, please.
And commission reports.
Uh, we can start with you, any reports?
Well, uh, thank you for starting with me. The only issue, not issue, but the only thing I can share with the council is that I spent some time with, uh, our new mayor and, uh, Wheeling, uh, Pat Horker, from Horker Farms, no less. We're meeting on Wednesday in particular, coincidentally, with, uh, the Allstate chief pilot at the airport. Uh, they've brought in two new, uh, jets, and he wants to show us around. And I like keeping contact with Allstate for several other reasons, so it's good to, uh, try to work things out. I'm in favor of leaving the IGA alone, I'm not in favor of going back to when I was serving on that board, of switching, uh, chairman every year, over one city to the other. We have a good IGA, uh, that means that we now, uh, can start looking for a chairman, and, uh, I will talk to, uh, Mayor Horker about that and get that rolling. Any questions on that? That's all I have, moving on.
I have no report, sir.
All right, down to my left, who do we have? Chief?
We started our interviews tonight for our police officer positions. We're interviewing seven candidates tonight, uh, May 26th, we're interviewing seven more, and then on May 27th, uh, we got our final 13 interviews from our last application process.
Dan, you think you'll have someone on board quickly?
We're hoping. There are several candidates that are already certified officers. Um, hopefully we can land one of them, we won't have to send them to the academy, they can get right on the street through field training. If not, we have a, uh, police academy slot set for June 26th. So hopefully we can land one of these that are already certified and get them on the street.
All right, Alderman Dolik, why don't you go next, because I know you have something to say about that wonderful police department that you volunteer at.
I do.
You're gonna congratulate them?
Well, I, uh, a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. Uh, as far as that, um, I know we have a SWANQ event, um, that's coming up on June 10th, and I know that Deputy Chiefs Lockey and, uh, Stephanie Convoy are helping us get organized with some volunteers. I know Peter and I worked that last year, and we were very overwhelmed. I know it's very well-attended, it's well-publicized, um, uh, so I'm hoping that it goes a little bit more smoothly this year, so I appreciate their help with that. I also wanted to mention, uh, or just give a word of thanks to our, uh, Public Works Department. Uh, a few weeks ago, it was brought to my attention that, uh, we had a resident in Quincy Park that tripped and fell over a, uh, an uneven portion of the sidewalk. I talked to Dan Peterson about it, uh, I was immediately contacted by Jim O'Neil. He set up, uh, a grinding project, uh, within a week. I took a walk around, and there were probably two dozen specific areas that were smoothed out, um, and within 24 hours, I got comments from residents there. So, uh, I wish everything could go that smoothly and that quickly, uh, but it's worth mentioning that, uh, it not only went very well, but it was, it was noticed by the community and very much appreciated, so thanks to our Public Works Department, and that's all I have.
All right, Alderman Lovickson?
Um, no comment right now, no, no updates.
Okay, we'll, uh, appreciate that. Moving on to Alderman Rosenthal.
Uh, no particular comments at this point. We will be having a strategic directions committee going back to its regular third Thursday of the month meeting schedule.
Okay. What time does that mean?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
The regular third Thursday.
All right, you'll get a notice on that, right?
Right.
Okay, Karen, please?
Mayor, on May 20th, we have the mayor's breakfast, and I still need to hear from some people about their attendance, and also, uh, this Wednesday, May 10th, we have the grand opening at Grand Brier, and you will be the, the official master of ceremonies.
I'll retire to the back room.
That's at 5:00 PM, but they would like you there at 4:45, actually.
Okay, I have to talk to you about that, I have a slightly different schedule, but I'll be there. Uh, and, uh, we, uh, have response for people coming from the public?
For the mayor's breakfast?
Yes.
Yes, we're getting, uh, we are getting a lot of people responding now, and I actually...
Nine or 10, or what's a lot of people?
No, we have more than 10. I'm gonna say right now, we have about 60, which is usually, that's what happens, and then, uh, we get the big rush at the end.
Okay, and we also have had some contributions towards the cost...
We have had contributions.
Excuse me, to defray the cost of our...
Yes.
Uh, employees who don't pay.
Yes, and we just got, and we also had some raffle prizes given to us.
Oh, okay, so that's come along.
Yes.
Not much time left, though.
Not much time left.
Okay. Uh, Joe, you have nothing. Uh, Wendy, Morgan, City Clerk?
Yes, um, you know, I, um, I saw, you know, again, and I appreciate that the Lions Club donated funds to the police outreach program. I'd also want to mention that the Rotary Club of Mount Prospect, Prospect Heights, um, also donates $1,500 a year to the police outreach program. They've done that for the last three years, and I'd like to thank them as well for their contributions and donations to this, uh, wonderful program.
Good.
I, I also want to mention that, you know, we also have Community Day coming up on June 3rd for the families. We also have, um, our Prospect Heights block party coming up on June 24th at Lions Park, and that's gonna be a great event, and the Battle of the Bands, food, beer, wine, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. I'm looking forward.
Good, excellent. Alderman Messer?
Uh, yes, I have two things. Um, one, real quick, May 20th, uh, in addition to the mayor's breakfast, later that evening is the local, uh, chapter of the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life event. It begins at 6:00 PM, ends at 6:00 AM. You don't have to be there the whole time, um, I am there. If anyone would like to come and walk a couple laps with me in support of this cause, feel free to. Um, you can also make donations on their website, or you can contact me for information, and I appreciate everyone who has donated so far. Um, the second issue I need to report on is I'm receiving a lot of complaints about Plaza Drive, so you can bear with me for just a couple minutes. There are a couple pictures I went over, there are 28 potholes on that little strip of road. There's one, I forgot my tape measure, so I tried to put my foot in to give you an idea of how big and deep, um, these potholes are. Um, they're, they're throughout, I mean, you literally can't drive there without going through a pothole, and, I mean, you could, when that fills up with water, when it rains, you can bathe about two babies in there. I mean, like, these are huge. Um, you can keep going, I kinda wanna see the one at the, so I mean, you see, they're, they're all throughout. And so this is when, like, when you're coming down Frontage Road, you turn it, it's almost impossible to turn on to Plaza Drive without going through a pothole. They're big, they're deep, people are getting damage to their cars. Um, I know it can necessarily be addressed this second at this meeting, but I just wanted to bring it up the report. Um, I know we don't own Plaza Drive, um, but I also know we don't own other residences' private driveways, which has been mentioned about making them change their driveways from gravel to paving, so if we have the ability to do that, I think we have the ability to address this on some level. So I just want to make sure everyone was aware of the situation. I know it's been going on for years, but it's getting to the point that we really need to try to do something about it, and I will work with probably Dan and Joe, um, to see what we can do to move things forward and bring it back to the council, um, but I just did want to report on that matter this evening.
All right, you made a good point. It's not our own, but it casts a dark shadow on our city, and, uh, you know, we've talked about Plaza Drive for as long as I can remember. We were gonna buy it, we were gonna take care of it, we couldn't sign up enough of the ownership that owns it now. Uh, maybe Dan, you can light some, shed some light on this.
You brought it up, um, earlier this spring, we took a very proactive, uh, stance with all seven owners of Plaza Drive, and put them all on notice that this was unacceptable, and since that's happened, we've had a number of meetings. The owners of Country Pines, those six owners of there, have already gone out to bid, they're working with us and engineering to come up with specs to the road to build it to our standards, so if we can get it done, and they would like to dedicate it, it would meet any of the city requirements. So they're in the process right now. We've had three meetings and reviewed two quotes so, to date, and hopefully we will be getting a permit for that road for at least the north half. Um, the south half is owned by Pabcor, and they've been in discussions with Pabcor on doing the whole road. So it is very, we are actively in this now, and, um, I was hoping to have the, something a little more firm today, but, but just to bring you up to speed where we are with it.
Yeah, well, thanks for the update, and if you can keep me in the loop, that would be awesome.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right, back to you, Dan.
Uh, the good news is, the Senior Pollo opened last Wednesday, and, uh, the food is amazing. Um, I was again there this evening, so, um, it's, uh, the place is beautiful inside, and I encourage everybody to go, and Mariano and Mario, Mario are there, and it's just, uh, when they get used to the staff and the turnover, and talking to them this evening, they did a couple hundred people on Saturday, a couple hundred people Saturday, another couple hundred Friday, and are looking forward to possibly grand opening a little later in the month. So, that's, that's good news on that front.
I was disappointed that he didn't name it Mariano, because that's his name. Mariano's Senior Pollo, might have gotten some draw out of Mariano's.
They're already starting to see a lunch crowd with ice cream, and they have $1 Taco Tuesdays for the whole month of May, so if you want to go in for $1 tacos on Tuesdays, for the rest of the month.
Sports games, yeah, there's $1, $2 tacos on Wednesday.
Uh, that, so that's good news. We are very busy, we've been working very closely with the contractors at Quincy Park to work with them on upgrading their electrical systems, and to date, we're probably 200 permits into the 590 of the complex, so that'll still be going for quite some time.
Be good. Uh, Peter?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Williamson?
No report, Mayor.
All right, Joe, we can move on, we have Morris?
Uh, we have, uh...
Have we skipped anything?
We do have workshop. Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you mind if I made a report?
No, it's about time you gave up. Thank you. Meeting's on the...
From my, from my cave?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just would like to mention that tomorrow is Tuesday.
Thank you.
Senior Polo, $1 tacos.
Oh, okay.
Those two are next to each other, or not?
Pollo. It's Pollo, how do you say it?
Pollo.
Pollo. I, I took Spanish for six years, I still can't say it, but anyway. Uh, I actually was one, uh, was, my wife and I were two of the 200 people that showed up on Friday at that establishment, and it was pretty good. We were, we were really pleased, and we were, it was an accident, really, that we went there, but, uh, we did meet Mario, and we talked to him about the business and everything that was going on, and he talked about the grand opening, and he was wanting to have it, like, in a week, and I said, well, it doesn't give us a lot of time to plan for anything, and we need to publicize this, and get people to come out, and let people know that this is happening, how about the, oh, yeah, okay, so we, he's decided that maybe later in the month would be better, so we can actually get our act together, and we got a lot going on now, anyway, so...
Let's go for Tuesday, though.
Oh, we could, we could go.
We have a crowd there.
That's a good idea.
We have people there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, consider, he, I'll, I'll mention it to him if I see him again, sure. Um, but seriously, um, Wendy mentioned that, uh, the Rotary Club was donating money to the police outreach program, as did the Lions Club, and, uh, I talked to a few people about this recently, and I just thought it would be a good idea for the city to mention that anyone could contribute to the police outreach program. It's a good program that, uh, the police department, uh, most of the policemen are volunteering, I think.
Yes, they volunteer, they...
Yeah, they volunteer, and so people in the community who, um, want to find things like this that they can contribute to, because, you know, sometimes you get asked for contributions to various groups and clubs and so forth, and you don't really know where the money's going. In this case, if people would like to contribute, they, they know where the money's going, so the, the, the door is open for them to contribute to that cause. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that Patrick and I were over at the Indian Trails Library grand opening on Saturday, and we shot video of that, and it really went well. I mean, there was a lot of people there, I, I didn't count them, but I would say there were 500 people there. It was a massive crowd. Uh, and so they had a ribbon cutting, and they had, uh, speakers inside, and they had, uh, coffee and donuts and things like that, and the, it's really a beautiful building. I, I didn't really, uh, I didn't know what to expect. Everybody said, well, it's really, uh, interesting, brand-new concept and everything, it's not like any library you've ever been in, actually. Uh, so, but because, um, they directly serve, uh, portions of our east side, and, uh, the Prospect Heights Library has a reciprocal relationship with Indian Trails, of course, so anybody is welcome to go back and forth between, um, I would encourage everybody to go over and take a look. It's, uh, really quite an outstanding building. Uh, so, and, uh, and then finally, um, Alderman Dolik came and had a tour of the AV department, uh, a week and a half ago or so, and, uh, we're still trying to, uh, encourage him and everybody else on the, on the board, if they'd like to come and do the, uh, video E-news, uh, at the city hall, because it's been my responsibility on and off for a few years to do that, and, uh, I'm not the only one that should be in front of the camera. I'd like to give everybody an opportunity to come in and, uh, read the E-news, uh, on video, and, uh, give the residents a chance to see you and hear you, um, individually, and, uh, learn more about what's going on around the city. So, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to talk? Uh, all right, Joe?
Uh, brings us to item 12, workshop items. Uh, item 12A, review of city liquor code, this is, uh, under construction. Uh, item 12B is tonight's topic, is discussion of sanitary sewer rate study, picking up where we left from, oh, a couple weeks ago with, uh, the town hall meeting and the presentation by the rate study consultants.
So we have a discussion, uh, what do we do? Who wants to start?
Uh, we're, uh, seeking, uh, direction. I think we've, we've studied it, uh, as, as far as we can go, we've had public comment, um, I think the council's aware of the situation, it's, uh, it's losing, the, the fund is losing money, and we have, uh, uh, we have to address some capital reinvestment issues, so it's a matter of, tonight, I think, seeking, uh, direction from the council.
All right, who wants to start?
If I could, it...
Yes, sir.
It's kind of difficult to reference anything without anything in front of us, but, um, if I recall, what I wanted to see was that option three, it was that $20 a month, and that it escalated roughly 3% per year, so there was minimal impact year to year to the resident. And it started us off, um, pretty aggressively on the right track to get everything televised, so that we know the state of the system, and then we can go back in, uh, you know, a couple of years, and assess it, and see, hey, is that $20 a month something we need? Is that something more than what we needed, or, or something different? So, my, my, my recommendation would be to look at option number three.
I would agree with that, um, that was my view as well. Um, it addressed the issue of getting the, the entire system televised, which I think is one of the most important things, so that we know what we're dealing with. So that, that option did make the most sense to me as well.
I would agree with that as well, uh, and I think what we really should be looking for now is getting in place, if that's the will of the council, then directing staff, uh, maybe working with one or two of us, to come up with a specific action plan going forward that would encompass the next, maybe two to three years, is what we're gonna do.
Alderman Lovickson?
No, I agree, that is the best plan. I think it's important to mention, too, that we don't necessarily have to increase it year to year. I know we put it in there, and I know, I know, we have no idea until we get that videotaping done, Russ. No, it's, this...
All right, all right, all right.
This, this has a different...
Mr. Lovickson has the floor, please.
Can we, can we make a note of that, that there was a little squabble between myself and Alderman Williamson here, just so you know? But this is the only, this is the only one, this is different than the vehicle stickers, because we do have a cost associated with this. We can't in right conscience, and we shouldn't just go and say we're gonna keep increasing this if we don't need it. I think the public's trust to say that we can go to $20 comes with their scrutiny of how we handle what we're doing with that $20, and if we don't need to raise it, we won't. If we see that we're on a trajectory that's gonna say our balance is growing, we, this model gives us the perfect example of how we should do things, because it says what our reserves have to be, how they grow, it lets us build in our cost of oper- in our cost of operation, lets us build in the videotaping and the improvements that have to be done. I don't think we're gonna necessarily say we're gonna increase it every year by 3%.
I can agree with that. What I don't wanna get into is a situation where each time you need to increase it, you have to go to referendum, because you're never gonna get that, and if-
No, we don't have to go to referendum, but I do think it's, this is something we should look at, and this goes to a whole different topic about budgets. We need to approve budgets going forward from this year by departments-
Yeah.
And by, in a different way, by cost, right, by cost centers, so that we can analyze them better over time and say what they should be, and so we're not just getting into this last-minute rush with the budget.
Speaker, where's our finance director?
I would like to know what the mayor thinks. I just wanna make, I know the mayor had a different thought of what we should do with the sewer system. Are you comfortable with the option three?
I'm good with it, but I do have a heavy, a serious thought about the sewer system. I just don't understand why we wouldn't sell it, pick up, I believe the number was $5 million, maybe it was more, and that they would phase in the cost of whatever it is. Start at $8, which is apparently what it is now, and then every year, raise it to the level of what their standard rate is in five years. I don't know why we want backhoes and contractors and, you know, the issue of more personnel and all those things, but that has nothing to do with what you're talking about, right? You're on item three.
Sir, can we respond to that?
What's the substance of item three? Synopsis?
Oh, it was $20 a month and-
Right.
And minimal escalation.
All right, if we're gonna do it, then I guess that's what we would have to do.
Well, what I wanted to respond to is my feelings of why we shouldn't sell it, because if we sell it, based on the numbers that we got from Illinois American Water, the costs were significantly more than what we're looking at here. It was not $8.50 a month, it was more like, I think, to start out, $28.50 a month.
No, it was a phased-in program over five years.
Right, but it was a larger amount, starting at, I think it was $26.50 or $28.50 at the beginning.
No, it was about the low we're paying now. I-
I don't have anything to back it up. And then, the history that was shown with Quincy Park and other municipalities, the one closest to us being Quincy Park, was, it was, it was an enormous increase. I mean, I wanna say they're paying close to $40 a month just for their sewers, just for their sewer fees, and that's, that's not something I could in good conscience impose on myself or anybody else.
Well, if we've got a 60-year-old system, which we keep hearing that number, 40 or more, we're gonna have to reline all the pipes.
Right, that's part of option three. I encourage you to read option three.
Right, and our people will have to, I read it, our people will have to pay for that. And we have to levy the fees, and we have to administer the process of getting the sewers relined and pay the contractors, and have more people and our own equipment to some extent. We have our own sewer big machine, whatever you call a big bertha or something, that cleans out, so we've got something already.
Even if we sell it, all that does is give you money upfront. At the end of the day, you're paying for it. It's really nothing more than a loan.
We're paying for it whether we sell it or not. We still have to pay for it.
But we own it now. I mean, it was gifted to us. We didn't even have to pay for it. Right now, all we're doing is establishing a system, pardon?
We have to pay for your repair system. We just got a bonus, so anyway.
About $4,500, right?
That's something. Now, this'll be in your hands, gentlemen. I don't think we should do what we're doing, and I've said that before, so. Anyone else chime in? How do we move on?
I just wanna make, I just wanna raise a concern, is that when I was at the town hall meeting, and I also wanna just mention that Joe Wade did a great job in hosting and, basically, you know, being the master of ceremonies at that town hall meeting, did a fantastic job, Joe. You should be congratulated for that. One of the things that I was concerned about is that the graphs that were shown are just projections. We don't yet know until we televise the system, we don't really know what's underneath there, and as the mayor said, you know, 40 years, 50 years, however old it is, I have some concerns about the rate increases that are gonna be taking place in order to try to repair the pipes and to line the pipe, reline the pipes, so I have some concerns about that.
The mayor's proposal will cost you double what we're talking about doing. Literally double. I mean, we're talking about, yes, these are projections, but we've gone to professionals to get those projections. I mean, if you can't, if you can't trust in those, then it was silly for us to ever even go out and have the study done. But the projections that he's talking about, we have history of, locally in Lake Clair, and I believe, do they serve other parts of the east side, too? But I've heard nothing-
Isn't that also for water as well as sewer?
It's separate. I mean, they have water and they have sanitary, but there's two separate costs, and working with Bree, prior to Matt being here, I mean, all I heard for four years was how exorbitant the rates were for Illinois American, and then she showed them to me, and they were. I mean, they were, they were close to, Matt, what are they, about 40 bucks?
Yeah. I moved-
$40 for sanitary. We're gonna go from $6.50 to 40?
Just to give you an idea, about five years ago, I moved to Quincy Park from Glenview. I pay more per month through Illinois American Water than I paid quarterly in Glenview for a house. I mean, that gives you an idea of the-
Are you paying quarterly, or are you paying monthly?
No, I'm paying monthly now, and I pay more per month than I paid for three months in Glenview.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, like you said, forty, thirty-some dollars a month for-
There's a lot of pushback from a lot of communities with Illinois American Water. In fact, Tressler has a case against them right now, or has just closed one. So, you know, I certainly have quite a bit of knowledge about how they work, and the whole idea of selling it, we could sell it for $15 million. All they're gonna do is raise our rates so that they can get, you know, get that money back. It's a business. They're gonna make their money. They're not gonna lose it.
Well, when I see us, you know, as a comparison, plowing the roads with lawnmowers, it's gonna be tough. In other words, we have to do all that work, we have to place the contracts, we have to get the RFPs, we have to pay for everything anyway.
But we're in control of that.
I don't, I don't see it. All right, let's move on.
I just wanna come back to my comment that going forward, we should have developed and be brought to this council a written plan, multi-year plan, that we can vote up or down on in terms of the action plan itself, unless the council disagrees.
Can that be put on the agenda for the Strategic Directions Committee?
Well, I think we've already seen the plan. The plan was the presentation, the model was in there, the scenarios were presented.
Right, but then we need a plan that-
We have to, we need a, I don't know if it'd be an ordinance or resolution to adopt the rate, is what we need to do. I think that's the last piece that we have of this.
It would be a resolution to adopt the plan, but if you're changing the rates, it would be-
Well, the plan does call out in plan, in option three or C, or whatever it was, that it would be a $20 rate, so I guess we could adopt that, but I think they need it for billing purposes. The menu is already there in the, in the plan that was presented to us by the consultant.
Is, well, my question is, is that all we need, or do we need to know going forward, since we are gonna be in control of this thing, what we're gonna be doing from year to year to year as we do budgets, ties back into your budget situation, rather, all we've approved is say, yeah, we're gonna do it, and we're gonna charge this amount of money, we're gonna use option three, but beyond that, we haven't gone anyplace, as far as I can see, unless I'm missing something.
Correct. To add to what you're saying, yes, you need some formal direction. I also think that you need some verbiage in there that, to the mayor's point, talks to, it talks to who's going to head this up, okay, and that needs to be, you know, a qualified Public Works Director, in my mind.
Well, that's all part of a-
Right, but that's part of, and that's why I say, can we talk about this at the SDC level, and then put together a plan, and then implement direction at the next meeting?
I'll put that, I'll put that on the agenda for us. That's okay.
All right, do we move on with the warrants? You know what, I noticed there's like 15 zeros here. We, only ever money, couldn't pay any bills, or what was going on?
No expenditures in those, those areas.
Wow.
So the zeros are not a bad thing at times.
No, I just don't wanna have any always.
Right, or all at once?
Yeah. All right, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so we have total this period expenditures amount, well, for this period of $203,515.41, the 4/28/2017 payroll posting of $151,859.51, and total warrants in the amount of $355,374.92.
Motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Second.
Second, please. We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion, there being none, we will take a roll call.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Lovickson?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Minister, and what's next?
We do not have any resident comments. We are requesting an executive session tonight. City Attorney, Mr. Carney, can address that for purposes.
Mayor, we have three items for consideration in executive session tonight. First is the appointment, employment of specific employees. The second is pending litigation, and the third is collective negotiating matters.
Okay, everybody agree with that? If so, those will be the issues, and we will take a motion to adjourn. No motion, no issues or actions to be taken, as far as I can see, afterwards, so we will not reconvene, and this will be it.
Upstairs, Mayor's Conference Room.
I move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the city's council.
Second.
We need a roll call? Can we say aye?
Aye.
What, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.